Good evening. Welcome to the Glensfolds County Council Meeting. It's Tuesday, July 9th, 2024. We have our 7:30 regular session, and tonight we have a pledge allegiance laid by Councilman Adonis Clark.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on which it stands, America, indivisible, and every day and justice are one.
Thank you very much. We open the county council meeting with public comments. I don't see anybody here from the public at the council meeting. We'll have public comment at the end as well unless if anybody would like to come, let us know. Peter, if anybody joins us online, we get again at the end. But since I see nobody here from the public, I'd like to call Karen Lambert, our Glensfolds Purchasing Director, give us an update on the, an update regarding the current department. Thank you, Karen.
I supposed to talk?
No, you're all right. It's, it's pretty good if you, as long as you speak in that general direction, you're all right.
Most of you all know me. I'm Carrie Lambert. I'm the new purchasing agent for the city of Glensfolds. I have worked for the city for 24 years, six years in the controller's office. In the last 18, I've been at the Glensfolds DPW. Debbie Vaughn has been the purchasing agent for four years and finally retired in August and has been working, was working three days a week to help us out. In February, I went up there to start training with Debbie. I have been going back and forth between DPW and purchasing since February. Debbie is now down to one day a week. She's here and we're, she'll be done on August 1st. So I'm trying to get as much information from her as I can. As you all know, she has a lot. Very smart, very big shoes to fill. She's been wonderful, very helpful, always, always there to answer any questions I have. DPW is in the process of having a new senior account clerk, so I'm not going there as often. However, that particular person is out for three weeks, so I am going over there more often. But once she's back, I should be able to go down just when she needs me. As for the purchasing department, so far this year, we've done nine bid openings, three RFP openings, and two RFQ openings. So as halfway through the year, we're about, we've done about 14. Our, our department is also responsible, as you guys all know, for all purchases made within the city. We create all the purchase orders and it's also our job to check every purchase order that comes in to make sure all the invoices are correct, all the backup is correct, all the certified payroll is correct. We do the warrant that you guys all approve. There's a lot. Debbie does all the ordering for the city, all the supplies and everything that you need, pencils, pens, what have you. I have Hazel in my office who's a great help in doing, we do a lot of the purchase orders for the departments because not every department has munis. The bigger departments do when they do their own purchase orders, but the smaller departments, we do their purchase orders for them. Again, like I said, I'm just trying to learn. I'm going to try to, hopefully there's some classes or online things that I can take to learn. Debbie has left me a lot of information, a lot of packets that I can look through. She says that we're getting there. I'm doing, she says I'm doing great. I think she's just being nice. But it, it is a lot of information and, and I know why she does it. You know, when auditors come, that's what they look for. They want to make sure that we're doing everything correctly. It is a lot of responsibility and like I said, she, she's really good at it. So she's teaching me. So if they think she's strong and hard, I'm going to be hard because I'm doing just what she taught me. So it's not going to get any easier, unfortunately. So that's it. If there's any other questions?
I'll just be saying you're doing fantastic. So we're meeting, Debbie, Carrie and I are meeting on average about every three weeks. It's been, it's been fantastic. They have a list of everything that Debbie was originally responsible for and Carrie and Debbie have reviewed the list with me and we're all good. It's just those big experiences of the RFPs and the RFQs and doing them just once isn't, isn't always enough. And so it's been great. And also the big case so that we didn't lose anybody in DPW. We've hired Carrie's replacement. She is now busy training her as well. But that woman, and I apologize, I don't remember, Monica, had a vacation planned before she took the job with us. And so she is out on vacation and so therefore Carrie is wearing multiple hats, getting them for the next few weeks and testing our, our abilities and stuff. So I think it's great. We probably, even though Debbie is, is supposed to stop on August 1st, we probably will have her step back in when we're doing some more of these, the bigger POs and not purchase, the, the bigger RFQs and RFPs to ever come in just to make sure Carrie's doing everything perfectly. And so Debbie's willing to help us with that per diem. And it won't be necessary for much, but we just want to make sure that everything's great. And so I'll let you know.
Well, it's nice of Debbie to have that seat and to offer that. I have Carrie, Carrie and I have been together a long time. I know she's very capable at any job she has had to see at Glensfolds and I have no doubt she'll do an excellent job as our assistant.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd like to just compliment you. I'm 25 years of service in the city of Glensfolds.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
You don't see that much today. It's nice to have you here. This job ensures an upgrade for you and I couldn't be happier. And I think it's great when the city can promote internally.
Yes.
And then you also have that backfill capability. So it's like you say, somebody needs to be hired in another department, you got somebody. So congratulations on the job and your service.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Thanks again, Carrie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Moving on, we'll go to committee reports. Councilman Clark.
No report.
Councilman Donahue.
No report.
Councilman Lang.
No report.
Councilwoman Pong.
Recreation will be meeting on July 16th at 8:00 a.m. and we have a resolution at 8:00 o'clock, but July 16th.
Mary's like, wow.
We have a lot of different vacations happening at different times. That was a day for happy. Is that me?
Let's give it a shot.
Anyway, 8:00 is the time of work. There's a resolution on our agenda tonight to accept $1,500 to the Crandall Park Pubification Committee. So we thank them for their contribution to wind screens that we're going to be putting up at all the pickleball courts around the city. So they paid for some of it and then we'll use some of the recreation ARPA money for the rest. But Building and Code will be meeting on July 30th at 5:30 p.m. and that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Lang.
The Technology Committee met today, 5:30. We discussed getting training for SharePoint, Excel, Teams, and OneDrive from Story Tech for various department heads to quote some stuff. And we're just going to try to, at one of the next department meetings, get people lined up for training or address to the next.
Can they do that for the council as well this night?
I, I'm sure they could. They're, you know, they said they could scale meetings larger too, so.
I think that would be valuable for us to have.
Yeah. I, I can follow up with that too. There's a, we're looking at the cost of upgrading all of the laptops and towers to be ready for Windows 11 because Windows 10 goes out of service in October of next year. Windows 11 isn't necessarily ready for prime time yet because there's some security issues, but they're working on that. They should have something for that. We, we also had a question that I need to follow up with Bill Over in Sewage and Water about the scale of PLC systems. I know I've reached out to him and he said that they would be okay, but I just don't know what they're operating on. So I just want to follow up again. And the Building and Co's move over to 333 Land. We've heard there's some extra infrastructure that needs to go over there. We wanted to make sure that when they're, when they're set up back in the DPW building that, that they can get the equipment over there.
Infrastructure comes back.
Exactly. Talked about a C-click fix update. It's basically in the same sort of state as it has been where we're waiting for one app to be updated for Android phone. City's starting to look at the Apple app. Then we'll probably move it along to internal people to kind of shake out the bugs before we bring it out to the public on a slow roll basis before doing a marketing push to get everybody out to it. We should start seeing more of that in the next month or so. And basically, oh, Diana brought up that the time to schedule for a demo for all the council, for the cameras in the parks especially, but set up over at the police department where they have monitors all set up. That's about that.
Yeah, looks, looks great. So it'd be great to get us all.
It might be a good thing too to just get some video of that and put it up on the website.
As well, sure. Yeah. Thank you. And Councilwoman Gooden, committee votes.
Yes, special projects are continuing to get a lot of information, input rather, for the happens code. And so we're just continuing to compile it because actually I've given really a lot of input and passion every day. So it's really exciting. So, and it's a lot of different things. So I look forward to bringing that to the group. We, we're going to meet tomorrow, but I have a conflict. So I'm hoping July 24th.
Time, Mary?
1:00.
1:00. Thank you. So under, first item is voice vote. We have three resolutions under voice vote. First is a resolution to approve the minutes of the June 25th, 2024 meeting of Glensfolds County Council. Second is a resolution to approve the clerks' monthly PVB reports. And third is a resolution to approve the Building and Code Department's monthly reports. Do we have a motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Under rule call vote, is there any items that the council would like to hold for discussion? Not hearing any. We'll go, Resolution 4 is a resolution to approve a public hearing to be held on July 23rd, 2024, 7/20 regarding local law to amend Chapter 153-1 Parks and Recreation Hours of Operation. 5 is a resolution to approve public hearing to be held on July 23rd at 7:25 p.m. to amend the city zoning code 220-4. Definitions to add adult use recreational retail definition and revise sections 20, uh, 220-15 through 220-21 as attached. 6 is a resolution to increase revenue line A009999-1589, miscellaneous public safety income by $354.12, and increase budget expense line A23120-1100, police overtime, department overtime by $354.12 for the Glensfolds PD presence at Wish Street Bowses graduation ceremony. 7 is a resolution to accept insurance reimbursement for damaged gun to a personal vehicle owned by a Glensfolds police officer along the commission of his duties, and increase revenue line A00999-2680, insurance recovers by $682.40. 8 is a resolution to increase revenue line A00999-1589, public safety income by a total of $9,904.84, and increase budget expense line A23120-1000, police department personal services by a total of $9,904.84 for Glensfolds PD presence at Glensfolds High School for a month of June and for various other events held at the high school during that month. 9 is a resolution to engage CT Mall Associates DPC at a lump sum of $3,800 with budgeted city funds to prepare a grant application for funding under capital grants for pro housing communities program administered by Empire State Development Corp. submitted by July 31st, 2024. 10 is a resolution to authorize community development annual payments in the amount of $18,288.71 to reimburse expense for not-for-profits for project year 2023, agreement to support engineering work in CBG eligible area of infrastructure project and to pay for emergency costs for emergency work done on rehab, rehabilitation level. 11 is a resolution to approve a minor amendment to the CBG budget seeking a transfer of $9,000 from program administration activity 515 to program delivery activity number 497 to ensure that the city provides necessary support of all CBG eligible program activities adopted and funded under the program year of 2022 CBPG budget. 12 is a resolution authorizing creation of a capital project for the, capital project for the Glensfolds Urban Tree Care and Planting Project to reimburse 100% from U.S. Department of Agricultural Forests for the total project cost of $400,000. 13 is a resolution to authorize Raftellus to perform a rate survey analysis and assessment of initial feasibility study, changing from quarterly to monthly water billing for the city of Glensfolds and Water and Sewer Department. And this in accordance with the proposal dated June 11th, 2024. In accordance with, excuse me, this contract will be divided into two tasks. Task one for the water rate survey and task two for initial feasibility, changing the monthly water bill in the amounts of $9,800 and $9,500 respectively. The Water Sewer Commission recommends accepting the Raftellus proposal and this will be paid by ARPA funds in the water sewer allocation. 14 is a resolution to move $831,390 from unreserved fund balance to increase expense line A23410-2300 motor vehicle equipment by $831,390 to purchase a 2024 Pierce Pumper fire apparatus from Firematic Supply, Inc. of Yap, Inc., New York. And the invoice is number one, excuse me, number 41162TR Glensfolds. 15 is a resolution to accept the payment of $1,500 from Crandall Park Pubification Committee to be put use, to, to put to use towards the purchase of wind screens for the pickleball courts at Crandall Park. 16 is a resolution to increase revenue line A009999-4089, general government aid ARPA by $10,130.2 and split that into two different expense lines. Increase expense line A67140-4374 electrical supplies by $2,715.73 and increase expense line A67110-4374 by $7,414.29 for a combined total of $10,130.2. 17 is a resolution to retroactively approve an approach permit approved by Merrick Collins on July 1st, 2024 for cable care construction Amsterdam Road, Scotia, New York to install new underground CATB service to the area off Catherine Street to the concession stand at the Little League Fields requiring 50 feet of road board July 1st, 2024 through July 5th, 2024 according to the city's general engineering requirements. 18 is a resolution to approve an approach permit renewal number 14-2024 for gourmet cafe, 185 Glenn Street for placement of chairs and tables in front of business for a period of July 10th, 2024 through May 31st, 2025, as shown in the approved layout. 19 is a resolution to common council hereby approve an approach for permit for renewal for number 13-2024 for Craft on 97 South Street for replacement of chairs in front of the business for a period of July 10th, 2024 through May 31st, 2025, in compliance with PROAG regulations for public access on the sidewalk as shown abroad. And 20 is a resolution to have the council approve a five-year Canon MFP multifunctional printer with lease contract for the building to its apartment and the cost of the lease, which is increased $5.85 per month for the term. 21 is a resolution to increase expense line A67110-2500 parks and equipment by $2,208 and to decrease expense line A45410-4364 cement and cement services by $2,208, moving funds to pay a lease payment on a compact wheel loader. 22 is a resolution to accept the lowest quote for tree removal throughout the city per the list provided by DPW dated 6/17/24 from High Peaks Tree Removal, Inc. of Lake George for the sum of $24,500. 23 is a resolution to authorize the controller's office to increase general fund expense line A113204487 audit other expert professional services by $3,500, and increase general fund revenue account line A009999-4089 federal aid other by $3,500 to the ARPA Rescue Plan Act of 2021. 24 is a resolution to approve the warrant. Do we have a motion for rule call vote? Do we have a second?
Second.
Rule call vote, please.
Councilman Adonis Clark.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lang.
Yes.
Councilwoman Landry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Palmer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Apple.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wood.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Under Old Business, Councilman Clark.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to just express my gratitude to Pat Dow and Jim Thatcher, the folks at Jackie and Community Development. There was, we improved some payments for, through that, one of us for emergency repairs. And there, there was a situation in the house that was not livable until the problem got fixed and they were eligible to have some assistance through this program. They are internally grateful so they can be back in their home. And this is what's great about this program where we can do these things for people in need. So I just want to thank everyone for supporting this program and they also want to thank everybody as well. So thank you.
Councilman Donahue, Old Business.
Uh, I don't know if it's old business or not, but the, you leave your tape with the Stewarts is a little bit much that works. Oh, you're not 163. At least we're supposed to be doing other than what, under the United something?
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, I think the Stewarts before the Javelin Jacks, they had a Stewart shop, but they're not, yeah. So, it's, they're a business and we're misspelled. They got a problem. I don't think it's our responsibility to go there. Now, I understand that the lights and all that are very expensive and there are messes. That's why I didn't have that.
What they agreed to was paying at least 168,000 and donating the land to do a turn signal to improve that intersection that they, they will, met with Stewarts actually today and they're, they're, we're going to have, we had, I had them meet and they were going to meet with Jeremy and Aaron Frankenfeld from AGFTC. Jeremy's been sick, so not much progress is made other than that. That's just a starting point. They can't pay their whole thing.
Terrible stuff on my finger. I mean, we agree with them.
Thank you. Councilman Lang.
To kind of segue off of what Councilman Donahue just said, I will make this statement at the last meeting that wasn't here. We can't afford to lose any housing in Glensfolds, any housing in Glensfolds. Recent surveys, including one over 400 pages long, conducted by Moore County cite the critical need for additional housing in our county and in our city and to accommodate our local regional business who changed our zone to allow for the demolition of two houses in an area that we would look back on in the future, I believe, and say we should have not done that. We've done that before. It's a great loss to the city and here we go again. And once it's gone, it's gone forever. Former county supervisor Claudia Greger, who's also a city resident, spoke at the two public hearing portions of our county council meetings and cited as a resident and former elected official of problems incorporated in Stewarts expansion lane, its visual effects on the whole neighborhood that surrounds it, and most importantly, the loss of housing. We need to do better job as we review virtue proposals to make sure they respect the character of our city, its neighborhoods, but most of all, that we respect their need to protect our much needed housing. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pong. Councilwoman Leatt.
I would just say that with, with Mr. Langtry just said, that the parking lot was changed zoning from multifamily housing to commercial in order for this to get to this point. So I believe you voted in favor of that, when that, when that same, for that same parcel.
I didn't invoke, I did not vote in favor of any zoning change.
No, there was a, there, it was not that long ago.
Well, I can tell you that I don't because I am adamant in this city that we need to protect the housing that we got. And that we don't go back to the 1970s when we tore half of our downtown down.
I'm just saying that this council recently took the parking lot that was going from Glen to Stewarts and changed.
Without any discussion on the two parcels on Beadman Street.
But this, this parcel was zoned for multifamily housing and you're saying that we can't possibly lose any housing things. And I believe you voted for it. Was that, that zoning change?
I don't think so. And I can tell you right now then that that parking lot, the density applied, a piece of parcel that thing would provide very little housing. And that was the only reason that I did so. We've got other.
If you took that two houses, it probably wouldn't fit like two multifamily houses. So that would be.
You know what? I'm a little more visionary than that. I see those two houses as being part of our downtown. Have you ever been on Beadman Street in Saratoga?
This isn't, this isn't the only time this has come up to.
No, I know that, but I'm stating, I'm stating what I feel is important to this city.
Okay. So it's a new feeling for it.
No, it's not a new feeling for me. It hasn't been a feeling for me since I've been on this council, worked in the housing industry in this area for 25 years, and I know that we have a housing crisis. we have a housing crisis.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Old business, Councilwoman Gooden.
No business.
New business, Councilman Park.
Well, so we're in full swing in the summer and Monday nights here in our fine downtown in our, in our bandstand here in the city park, gazebo, we have our band concerts starting at 7:00. Wednesdays, our take a bite starts 5 to 7 downtown. Thursdays, our food truck. Fridays, our summer concert series in the Crandall Band Show, Crandall Market 7:00. So you can take a nap on Tuesday night and then you're good to go for the rest of the week. So there's a lot of stuff going on in our fine city and it's an exciting time. And it's just great to see all the people walking downtown tonight on my way here. So a lot going on and I hope I didn't take anybody's thunder.
Thank you. New business, Councilman Downey.
I'm gonna get to touch with Jeff. I know he's under a lot of pressure getting the grants out and stuff like that. So if he can squeeze any time or if I can make time available for him or something like that, I'll do it. So.
I'll go.
But after that, we'll just wait for, stay for a while. So we'll go.
Thank you. Councilman Landry, sorry. New business. Thank you, Councilman Allen Clark. I didn't have much time. It was nice to see over the Fourth of July weekend how, how much we're affected by tourism in this area. It was a time in July 4 or in July or once the race pack opened in Saratoga, you could throw a bowling ball down the line street because nobody was here. And I happened to be around during that period of time and took a ride through to downtown and it was wonderful to see the restaurants were busy, people were on the street, stores were open. We were on a great ride. Thank you. Councilwoman Palmer, new business.
Well, second what Councilman Allen Clark said. I, I was able to attend a couple of the concerts at Crandall Park the 3rd of July and then Food Truck. It's just so fun. We see all of our neighbors and friends and I, we're so lucky to live in a community with so much, big enough to have these cultural events but small enough that we can see people we know as we walk in. It's great. I have a question. So resolution nine, we authorized some funds to apply for that grant. And I'm just curious if there was a list of, I guess the amount of times we have paid consultants to write grants for us. I'd just like to see that. I don't know if we have that somewhere.
List of the grants that were currently, that we have and we currently are applying for at that point?
Well, I want to see the ones that, that we've had to contract out to apply for as opposed to our staff doing themselves.
Yeah, her staff on writing grants. And we've written some like the, like the forestry one, but then you gotta find somebody else to help manage it. So I'll, I'll have a list of all the grants we've applied for and all the grants that we have. And then you can see where we'll have a list of what, who the contractors are and who we're managing.
Yeah, 'cause I know management of the grants is often part of the grant, right? You get a grant and the grant administration is lead for my grant, but to, to write the grant. That's what I want to see. Just I'm, I'm curious how often we're contracting out for those services. Thank you.
Thank you.
No new business.
Trying to, trying to write myself the notes. I'm gonna forget. I apologize. So I just wanted, I've got a few things under, she just sang. She's sorry. So under our, our small projects for sidewalk replacement is, is undergoing and nearly finishing up. We've got a couple more weeks of that. Our large project sidewalk replacement has started this week and you'll see it throughout the city of Glens Falls. It's fantastic to see our, our, our project dollars at work, our chips, money, hard work. The city watershed treatment plant has received a recognition award, a team award. I wanted to pass this along to you. I've got one, two, three, this press release either went out today or is going out tomorrow. So we can recognize for our, our, let's see, wastewater treatment operational excellence award for biomax system that we used ARPA money for in 2000, excuse me, we didn't use ARPA money for, but that we, we paid for a biomax system back in 2015. So it's, it's a neat, neat opportunity for us. I wanted to make sure we announced it. We also have a new traffic control assistant started July 1. Hooray, Hooray, we're filling that position. And we were, are issuing, she's going through training and we're issuing parking warnings. Again, now that we have somebody on the, on the streets in downtown, we'll issue warnings through ours first so that nobody can say they didn't know, there's no, no new laws or anything changed, but have somebody out there. There are people that have been parking all day illegally and got comfortable with it. We just want to ease ourselves back in to the enforcement of those downtown parking enforcement. So those are the new business I have. Public comment, Peter. Anybody have a public comment for us online?
No, we're being online. There's no one watching.
Got you. And so with that, not hearing anything, we have a motion to adjourn.
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.